This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's city council work session. It is seven o'clock. I believe all council members are present. Let's see. Jason, John, Linda, Rachel. And are we missing somebody?
Oh, she's here too. Elaine's here.
Oh, there we go. Yep, that's right. Okay. I cannot see the agenda. Here we go. So on the council work session tonight, we have the water report from Public Works Director Troy Cannon. Troy, are you with us? Okay, so we received the verbal.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Do you guys have, do you have that this time in front of you? No?
Yeah.
It looks like it.
We do.
Okay, good.
Hold on, I'm gonna. All right. You guys there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have to have Linda take over while I run a call. I will try to be back before the meeting's over. Linda, you good with that?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Okay, Troy, it's all yours.
I'm here. So first of all, does anybody have any questions about that report if you guys look through it or not? If not, then, you know, I kind of talked last council meeting about the numbers and whatnot. So page one is showing you water that we produce for each month. And then it shows that the total down at the bottom is sixty-four million gallons. And then it gives you a previous year of what we produced and what we produced in 2021. We're up a little bit, but you know, it could have been a couple of leaks that we had and whatever else. So that stuff adds up pretty fast. Page two is comparison between twenty-one and twenty. And then on the bottom, it's showing you, you know, all the way back to 2017 when when we had a huge leak in 2017. That's why we were at ninety ninety million. And we're only, we're only permitted for eighty-seven million, but you know, that's just what happens. So I mean, there's nothing we can control with that. Page three is what we produced versus what we sold. And that's a huge one, right? So this is where some of those numbers are a little skewed. I don't know if it's from, you know, the meters we put in, the new meters we put in are more accurate. But I think we need to do a better job of trying to figure out where that water's going and why aren't we not metering that certain, you know, certain water through our system? But right now, I can't tell you why. You know, on page five is what I come up with for water loss. And that's all estimates that I put out for like the fire department. I never said the fire department used that amount. That's just an estimate I come up with because they use other things for training, whatever else. That's nothing that the city charged them for or anything else. You know, I got leaks for a million gallons of water, which is, you know, probably right in that area. Broken and slow meters. We still have meters in the system that are not new. And so maybe that's some of it. Usually all of our two-inch meters or inch-and-a-half meters, we have not changed out yet. And those are all old. And so we might get and see a false reading on those. But other than that, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I estimated throughout that to give us our five thousand, five hundred thousand gallons of water that is, you know, that we can justify not metered. So that's where I came up with our eight-one, eight-point-one percent water loss. But other than that, I think we talked about the last page about how many ERUs we have last, last time. So that's three hundred and twenty-seven ERUs. And I think we figured out we use three hundred and eighty-something ERUs. What we use now. So we have quite a few ERUs left, which is good. So if anybody has any questions, just let me know. We can go over that.
Not so much on this, but on replacing the, the lines going out towards rainier. We've been saying that for the last ten, fifteen years and
I know. Right. Well, you know, Public Works is busy with a lot of stuff and, and I just can't seem to, we have one guy out sewer, we have myself, we have Brent and Miles who are doing sewer check valves. We've got a lot of stuff going on within the city. Potholes. And I just can't seem to find the time to do that. So I, I kind of had a conversation, I think with Wayne last time about maybe we should contract that out since we have money in the construction fund of water to have that part replaced. And so we don't, we're not always out there every other month replacing or putting patches on that water line.
Okay, have you talked to anybody?
I have not gone out.
Yeah?
No, I have not talked to anybody about. I need to talk to Mike, Mike Marshall from Gibson Olsen. He's our engineer to see if we want to upsize that to a two-inch. Or, you know, because right now it's an inch and it's a one-inch line.
Yeah, I know.
We need to maybe have that changed to at least inch and a half or two-inch line.
Well, the rest of the city is a two-inch line, isn't it?
I'm sorry, what?
The rest of the city's a two-inch line, isn't it?
Oh, no, we have, we have eight-inch, we have six-inch, we have four-inch, we have two-inch, we have all sorts of different lines throughout the city.
Okay.
Seems to me that that would be the thing to do then, to talk to Mike and see if we should contract it out. So if it's leaking, that could be where a lot of that water is going, so.
It could be, yeah. We've got so many Band-Aids on it that, yes, it needs to be replaced. And it would help Public Works out if we contracted that out. So.
Anybody have any questions for Troy?
Not questions, but I think we need to get on that as soon as possible. It's been a long, long time.
It has. I agree. Yes, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do we want to talk about, I think it's on the agenda for the belt press rental? In this work session? Or you guys want to just?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. So the belt press rental for doing the de-watering out the sludge pond. That is, he should have some figures in front of you, I hope. There it is. Yep.
Yeah, I'm looking for it just a second.
Okay.
Well, here it is.
Yep.
Okay.
So the rental of that belt press will, of course, it's de-watering. It will take the sludge out of, or the solids out of our sludge pond and leave the water itself. And then we can throw the water through the wastewater treatment plant. Last year, we, we were hauling water and sludge out at the same time. And so we paid I want us, I don't get my, it's not exact number. It's a hundred, we paid out a hundred and some odd thousand dollars to haul out sludge removal. And we only got probably not even half of the pond emptied. So right now with this belt rental, belt press rental, we could do the whole pond, which is a million and some odd gallons through that belt press. And then we still have to dispose of the, they call it cake, which is the stuff that comes off the, the belt press. And so we're, just a belt press alone is forty thousand dollars, which is a huge savings other than just trucking out water and sludge. So I believe this would be the best way for us to go for this, this coming up year. And then the cake would be land applied to Tribeca, wherever, wherever they have permits to do that. So the total amount, I mean, we still have some trucking involved with hauling out the cake and, and so forth, but right now we're way under amount that we spent last year for, for not even half. So I think this is the best way to go.
So it's forty-two hundred dollars a week? And that's for the whole, the whole rental? For everything?
Yeah, we're gonna rent it for a month though. So if you look down and it's like forty, the total price is like forty where is it at? Forty, keep going. Forty-two, whatever it was. For the, yep, yep. With a ten thousand dollar deposit.
Okay, okay.
Yep. And then ten thousand of that is mow fee and another ten thousand of that is demow. So hauling the machine in and then hauling the machine out. They charge for that too.
Is any of that stuff sellable for farms for fertilizer?
No. If it was Class A, it would be. But this is going to come back as Class B. So we are in the process right now of doing some testing on, on that. But most likely, we did it a couple of years ago. It'll come back Class B. And then using a land apply that, whatever else, further treatment of it. If we were a compost facility, then we can make a Class A. And then we could actually start selling the stuff. That's a long-term plan.
What would it take to get us to a Class A?
That is going through a SEPA permit. You have to go get a composting permit. And it's a quite a bit of process to do that. There was an outfit that Waterson had out there trying to do that. And they got the first phase of it, but the second phase they did not get. So now we're back to trying to find other ways to have that happen. It is a ways out. So I think if we, if we look at belt press rentals for this year and then come back after in three or four years, this is not a yearly thing. This is like a, every three or four years, evaluate what we have into our sludge pond and see if it's cost-effective for us to bring that back in. And then, you know, that's, you know, we're saving money that way also instead of just trucking the liquid in the sludge out.
What happened the last time that we, that we were looking at this? What stopped it from going forward? Do you remember?
I, I think we were in the process of trying to, we're hoping that somebody else would come in and like this, this grant money they were trying to get for us. And so we just pushed that off. And then we came to a point where we had no choice into hauling it out. That was kind of dictated by ecology. We needed to, or, I'll be honest with you right now, our sludge pond's full again. So we have to be proactive this year, and this is the best scenario for us.
Okay. But I'm not questioning the, the belt. I'm just looking forward to see when we can get to the point where we're making, you know, selling as much as we possibly can to keep the prices from having to go up.
Correct. And we're, you know, right now we, we stopped septic receiving because we're full right now. And, and the plant is struggling to keep up with what we have coming into it because the, the sludge that's been in there for fourteen years or thirteen years, it's really hot. They call it hot, full of nitrates, nitrogen. And so we, it's hard to put that through the plant because the plant can't really handle that. And so we have to do that in slow doses. So if it was just, if it was just septic receiving, we can handle what we've been doing. We've been doing averaging about eight thousand gallons a month or a day, sorry. And so the plant can handle something like that. But right now we can't because we are decanning what's in the sludge pond with the septic receiving. So that stuff is like extra hot. So that's where we're at with that right now. I think once we get the, the sludge pond down and it's manageable, and then we're taking in certain amount of septic receiving where, where it's feasible for the plant also. That's the goal that we're trying to do. So it's a touchy situation with septic waste and what we're taking in from the plant.
How long is it gonna take to get the plant down once we get the belts in?
Yes, if we can get that, the sludge pond down all the way emptied and get rid of all that old stuff that's been sitting in there for years upon years. And then, you know, it will make a difference on what we can take into that plant.
Yeah, I understand. How long would it take for that, for that machine that we're gonna rent to?
It's, it's a monthly rental. It does two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons a week. So my thought was for a whole month running that thing. And then if we, there's some, some other ways where we can keep it for a week longer. It might be a little bit more money, but it's not in that contract. But my plan right now is just for the, for the month. So that would be almost a million gallons for the month.
So you're thinking maybe five weeks before, before it's all cleared out?
Yeah. So I'm thinking, you can't do it right time, this time of season because everything freezes. Of course, we're going through a cold batch, but I'm thinking if we can get into it like May, the end of May and June, and then stockpile the cake, which they call cake. So it's just debris coming off the belt press that we can build a containment for that. And then when they are land applying in July and August is when we can start hauling that out and they can land apply it.
Any, anybody have any questions for Troy?
Yeah. Do we already have the supplies to build where we want to stockpile it? Or is that something else that we're gonna have to probably?
That is probably gonna be hay bales and plastic. So that the cost is not going to be that much. And I'm guessing between three hundred and four hundred yards of cake material. And that's a high estimate. That is not a direct amount of what I think is kind of, it's just an estimate. So I, we're estimating about that, that amount coming up.
Once this gets started, what's the smell gonna be like?
I really can't tell you. I think it's gonna probably have some smell like we're having now. Right now, we're having a lot of smell because it's full. And so I think, I don't think it's gonna be as bad as what it is. We're adding polymer to that mix when it goes through that belt press. So I think that binds everything together also, which will be better for smell. I think it's gonna have some. I think we might hear a little bit about it, but I don't think it's gonna be any more than we're hearing now.
Okay.
As soon as we get that pond gone, I think the smell is gonna go away. The problem is the pond is full and it needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm done.
All right, thanks. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Troy.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks, guys.
Well, let's go on to reports, shall we? We've got a few minutes that we can take some reports. Start at fired, whoops, where am I here? Oh. Chamber of Commerce, are you with us tonight? George?
I'm here. Thank you, Councilmember Godavec. The next chamber meeting will be not until Wednesday, March sixteenth. That'll be probably at the Kodiak Room. And we're gonna have the Fire Chief come and give us an update on what the plans are for the Fire District.
Okay. Economic EDC.
That meeting's tomorrow.
Okay. VCB. Nothing. Fire District twelve, John?
Nothing. We talked a little bit about it at the, at our commission meeting that the chief was gonna come to the chamber.
Okay. A library, Linda, are you here? Museum.
Oh, there was, there was no meeting this month.
You're right, there wasn't. Tenino Community Service Center, you're on, Jody. Did we lose Jody? Moving on, Arch Commission.
So later today in the, in the council packet, we're gonna update the ordinance for the Arts Commission. And then we'll have our first meeting probably next month or in April.
Okay. Civil Service Commission. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee. I haven't been able to have another meeting since the COVID hit me and I'm still working. But after the session's over, then I'll get a meeting together.
Jody's back.
I have not had any official news, but Ken Jones, I understand, is going to resign about that committee and the Farmers Market Committee. They're moving to Lacey, I think it was said. So I have asked Tyann Curtis to fill in to be a member of our committee and we'll be meeting. Finance Committee, Planning Commission. Anything, Jan? Yes. Yes, John?
Jody's back.
Oh, okay, Jody, you're on.
Okay. I had to switch to my phone. So can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, so this weekend, we, Saturday, we will be having a kids vaccination clinic at the Corey House. We are a hub for the Tenino and Bucota area for COVID tests. If anybody needs them, they just need to get ahold of us. We will be having our run in the last Saturday of March. And we will be having a after-run party bingo at the Eagles. So come on out and have a good time. We've got some good prizes. That's it.
Thanks, Jody.
Rainey may want to talk a little bit about Planning Commission. I know they had a meeting regarding parklets and streeteries. I don't know if that's something that you want to talk about.
Hey, you're on, Rainey.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Jen. At the moment, there's, we're still in the beginning stage. We're still doing some research and trying to find information out on these parklets and eateries that they want to put in front of the businesses on Sussex Ave. Again, we, again, we just had a meeting about it Friday, and we're still in the beginning stage of getting all the information to see if we can even get it approved through the state because it is being a state highway, we need to have state permission. And then we also get to get a development plan put together on how the structures would be built. Still, there's still, again, there's a lot that we need to put in place prior to putting the approval of them up, up on these parklets and eateries out there in front of the businesses on Sussex Ave.
Now, what are they called again, Rainey?
A parklet? Or a. Correct, or a street. So what these things are designed to do, and you'll see, you can see them, and they're, they're big right now. A lot of cities have developed them into their cities where the parklet is for a public use. So if there's, the, the, build these platforms out where you would park your car in front of the business on the parallel parking portion of the, of the street. And in lieu of being a parking spot, they can go ahead and put these little platforms in with railings and extra seating for outdoor eating and drinking. The eateries is where you can do the drinking and eating. And the parklet is what is open to the public. So the public could actually sit in those areas if they wanted to.
This all came about because of the restaurants struggling with indoor, indoor mandates. You see a lot of them up in Tacoma in the Seattle area.
Yeah, Edmonds, Olympia, Tacoma.
Couple in Olympia, not many.
Right.
The Planning Commission meeting is on our website, and there's a ton of examples that Dan Penrose put on there as well. Lots of pictures and things.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I lost my mic again. Okay. Where are we? Chief of Police, is our Chief of Police here tonight?
No.
We already got a report from Troy from the Public Works and City Planner. Rainey, have you got anything else to talk about tonight?
No, the only thing new we got going on is we did do a final CO on the new pizza place, Pizza Mia here in Sussex Ave. We just did the fire suppression test today in that past. So now we're the whole, the, the business owners themselves are just dealing with the Health Department. And according to them, they should be hopefully within the week, have those issues taken care of, and hopefully be open their doors here in the next couple of weeks.
That's great. Good, great. Thank you, Rainey.
You're welcome.
Clerk Treasure, Kayleen, are you here?
I am here. Good evening, everyone.
Hey, we can hear you.
I don't have much to report, just, you know, learning the programs and the different ins and outs still. And things are moving along real nicely. That's about all I have, Linda.
Okay, thanks, Kayleen.
Thank you.
Be that.
They had a meeting last night. If anybody wants the notes, just let me know. I'll email it to you.
Okay. CIP. Solid Waste Advisory Board.
I have not received anything. Nobody has contacted me. I have sent, I sent email to City Hall and I still have not heard anything from them. So I don't know what to do with it.
We were out for the holiday. I was out for the holiday. I apologize. But I did just see your email when I got here this evening, and I will get that figured out tomorrow for you, Elaine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, where are we here? Steady.
Our, our next steady meeting will be on March eighteenth, and probably it's gonna be one more Zoom meeting, not an in-person meeting. And we don't have the guest speaker signed up for that yet.
TCOM nine-one-one. School Board. Rachel, do you have anything for us?
Well, I, excuse me, just a couple of announcements. So the girls varsity basketball is playing this Friday at WF West High School. It's at six PM and tickets are on sale. If you want to purchase tickets and travel out there, it's on the district's website. And they're about twelve dollars per person. And if, if we win this game, then we move on to Yakima. And according to the WIA, it's gonna be on March third. So if you're able to make it, that would be amazing. But you have to purchase tickets. You just can't go and pay at the door. Also, the PTSA, PTSA is bringing back the dinner auction. Tickets are not on sale for that yet, but soon. They plan to have it up soon. But that'll be on May twentieth at six PM at Hillside Farms. So add that to your calendar too. So if you come out, they always have a really good dinner and they have really nice auction items. And it's just, and it all goes back to the school. So if you can, it's a great one to attend.
Thank you, Rachel.
Tonight I was playing Toppenish. Toppenish is number thirteen and Tenino's number twelve this Friday.
Thanks, Dan. TRPC.
Essentially, after meeting, after meeting notes, same thing with TPB.
Okay. And Legislature, and that's me. Well, there was one bill that I really thought would be interesting. Eighteen twenty-seven, and it's allowing the Department of Commerce to set up reinvestment account for cities and towns for economic development, civil and criminal legal assistance, community-based violence. a reinvestment account for cities and towns for economic development, civil and criminal legal assistance, community-based violence intervention and prevention, and reentry services. But the part that I thought was interesting in the summary of the bill was economic development, which includes addressing wealth disparities to promote asset building such as a home, as homeownership, and expanding access to financial resources, including but not limited to grants and loans for small businesses and intrapreneurs. Uh, financial literacy training and other small business training and support activities. I thought that was very interesting, and the only other thing that I thought would really behoove us to look at is the transportation budget and the, and the different, their, their different emphasis on, um, uh, infrastructure and helping out with, because we have, we have this huge, um, surplus in the, from the revenue forecast. And they're spending the money, and part of it's federal, part of it came from the federal government, but they want to, maybe we'll be able to get some money, some grants, to do something about our streets and our sidewalks, because that's part of what they are doing, so that's my report. And it is now 7:30. Welcome to the February 22nd, 2022 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the perpetrator which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'm needing agenda approval.
No more.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The mayor's back.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Linda. Um, that brings us to approval of the minutes from the 2/8/2022 City Council Meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
No more.
It's been moved, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Uh, next up is our consent calendar, this is a, can you scroll down, please?
Our, we're at the, Claire.
Uh, consent calendar, can can't see it. Uh, there we go, consent calendar, consi- consisting of February 9th, 2022 through February 22nd, 2022. Payroll EFTs in the amount of $106,734.62. Claims checks number 30411 through 30448, and EFTs in the amount of $53,156.51, per grand total of $159,891.13, with no liquor or cannabis license renewals. Is there any motion to approve the consent calendar? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Uh, we have no executive session, we have no presentations. Uh, that brings us to public comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, please do so at this time. State your name, address. Again, this is public comment period, number one. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment to City Council, going once, going twice, moving along. Uh, we have no public hearings, no proclamations, new business. Uh, new business, number one, uh, Happy, the Happy Grant, it's kind of fun to say. This is the Wash State Department of Commerce Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant, uh, to adopt a housing action plan contract. Uh, we received a grant for this through our planning department. Go back up, please. Wash State Department Housing Act, okay, uh, this is, we are recommending council review and and make a motion to approve the Happy Grant. Uh, this has been prepared by, uh, Clerk Treasure. So I will, uh, ask her if she has any comments before we, uh, consider any actions.
Hello. Um, the grant's objective is to develop a housing action plan to encourage construction of additional affordable housing and market rate housing in a greater variety of housing types and at prices that are accessible to a greater variety of incomes, including strategies aimed at the for-profit, single-family home market. Um, the grant objective is, you know, to, um, do an existing condition and housing needs analysis report, public engagement plan, public engagement summary and presentations, draft housing action plan, and adoption of housing action plan. The grant was $74,260, and all those things I just named off are where that money will be going to, or is where it's going to go to.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a motion from the council?
No approval. I'm so happy to hear it.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion or question of staff or anyone else?
Well, I'm not sure if, uh, staff is able to answer this yet, but, um, my biggest question is, what are they considering affordable housing? And, uh, listening a little bit, uh, to the legislature, the governor is now demanding even more for new construction, which jacks the price up, and if you jack the price up, you're getting out of affordable housing even further.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. That brings us to I lost it. I can't, I can't, can you scroll down, please? Sorry, I'm doing this all on my phone, so it's a little awkward. I usually have two screens in front of me.
Yeah, see that now?
No.
Okay.
Can you go back to the, can you go back to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
There we go. Okay.
We talked about this quite extensively while, while you were on your call.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and say, uh, that I approve this, uh, motion to approve this, uh, rental.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to, uh, enter into a rental agreement for a belt press unit to de-water, uh, septicage in the wastewater treatment plant. Is there any discussion?
Discussion is real simple, it's something that's needed, uh, in the, in the short run and in the long run. And if we can keep, uh, just keep the pond as clean as possible, it's going to make us a whole lot of money over time, and the equipment will be paid for just through that alone.
Yep, yep, so, yeah, this is, this is something that's, it's a budgeted item. Uh, it's a, it's a normal expense. Uh, in the 10, 13 years, I think, that we've had the wastewater treatment plant, uh, we haven't done a lot of septicage hauling off, which is, you know, there, there's, uh, I, I think a lot, a lot can be said about the, the great operation that we have there, and that we haven't needed to haul it off for, to be able to store it for 10 years, but we should have. So now we have a very, uh, a very nitrogen-rich, uh, kind of biology there, or nitrogen-rich lagoon. It's time for us to completely empty that thing, and then, uh, and, and, and keep, keep the train moving forward. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, item seven, Amendment Four to the CDBG Grant, you can open that up, please. Okay, this is for the Quarry Pool Renovation Project, Amendment Number Four to the CDBG agre- agreement. We are asking council to review and approve this. Want to scroll down, please? Uh, the period of performance is, in this proposed agreement, begins July 20th, July 11th, 2018, and September 2022. Uh, County Reserve's right to extend the agreement. Uh, the scope of work, you've had an opportunity to read, there's not much changing there. Can you go down to the amendment? Okay. Uh, compensation, compensation, okay? And a little further, and if any above conditions. Okay, so, uh, we are, administration is asking the council authorize the mayor to sign this amendment, and we will begin working on the Quarry Pool very shortly. We've picked a contractor, Orca, and, uh, this is, this should be the, kind of the final pieces, uh, to the contract.
So what this is saying that it, that it should be done, uh, August 1st?
We still expect it to be completed and open by July 4th.
Okay.
That is absolutely the goal, the sooner we can get started, the better off we are. Um, w- w- we are anticipating, hoping to move right into Phase Two of the construction. I'm working on securing some funds for that in the next coming weeks, and, uh, our, our absolute goal is to have it open by 4th of July weekend. We're going to be, we're going to be working hard to do that.
Also, if I can chime in, John, the other reason why they extended the date that far out is because it takes a while sometimes to close. The construction might be completed, but the paperwork is still not done. You know, you still get, need to get in your payment vouchers and that sort of stuff to get reimbursement, so that's kind of why it's been extended as well.
Yeah, this isn't a, this is not an extension of construction, it's just, uh, for the paperwork. Okay.
All, we have a motion to move, move, uh, motion of approval, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All, is there anyone against? I, I thought I heard you all, uh, okay, motion passes. Uh, that brings us to Resolution 2022 dash zero three. As part, so this is some, these are two, uh, land swaps that we've been working on for quite a while. Uh, as part of the exchange of property proposal, the City Council needs to declare, uh, 1137 Washington Avenue East Surplus to the city's needs. Attached is a resolution of the council that does that. Once the resolution is passed, the city is authorized to enter into a property exchange agreement involving that property. Uh, we've been talking about swapping, uh, property, these are two adjacent land parcels. A resident asked us if we would swap with them so that they could have the land that is closest to their property, because they own one on the other side of our property. Uh, over the last year and a half or so, we've talked about this a number of times, uh, council has, yeah, given us direction to do so. Uh, and so we are finally getting to the point where we can wrap this up, and, uh, we have presented a resolution to allow us to do this to the City Council.
Okay, so we can move forward, uh, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, um, accept Resolution 2022 dash, uh, zero three, uh, the land swap, uh, agreement. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I don't remember, uh, because it's been off and on. Uh, I don't remember, uh, any kind of financial numbers or what the property is worth. And the reason I bring that up is because someplace in here said that it, that to the city, the property was worthless. Property's not worthless, uh, but, and why would somebody, if, if that property is worthless, uh, how is this going to work out and benefit the city or is it, or, you know, just the numbers alone? We're not seeing
I don't, I don't, I don't think worthless as in, uh, no, no actual value. We have two pieces of property that are essentially equal value, but the property that the city has, we have no, uh, ness- we have no actual plans for. So it's not, uh, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't, there's, there's no, there's no specific plans that the city has for that property that would, uh, that would really make us want to keep it as opposed to have the other property. So it's, it's a swap of equal value property, but the property that we have, uh, doesn't have any value to us other than just the real estate value. We don't plan on putting a well there, we don't plan on building a police station there, we don't plan on, uh, putting a park there or anything like that.
Okay, and, yeah, that, that's the only question I had, because there's, there's no numbers, so how close in value is the swap?
They're the same size property, and they're right next to each other, so they're in the same neighborhood. Um, they're, neither of them have any improvements on them. Uh, so they're, you know, they're, they're as like-for-like as, as you could really imagine.
Okay, well, again, I was just looking at numbers, because after the swap, all of a sudden, the, the property of, the value of those lands will change. Because, uh, when we swap the land, that, the property that we had becomes more valuable to the person that's getting it. See what I mean? Because they've got a bigger piece that they can, uh, develop on.
Yes.
Sure that the, that the numbers come out well, and that neither one of us get hurt in, in the transaction.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, it's certainly good for the, the resident, um, because they'll now have adjoining properties. But, uh, it doesn't, I don't, I don't think it's at all a detriment to the city, because we're just, we're swapping it for an equal, something that's equally valuable, e- equally valued to us.
Has it been appraised, both properties?
Uh,
It's just, just the numbers.
N- no, so when we, when we went to the attorney, he, he said that because they are so similar, and we're not selling it, that's not really necessary.
Okay, I just see things different, but
And we've done this before, we did this, uh, with another piece of property. Um, we, we did a, we did a swap for a piece of property that was, that we had on, I want to see, Garfield, and a resident owned on Houston. And they were equal size, it was with Jim Gibson, uh, probably about six years ago. And, and we actually are, that's, that's another thing that we have to finalize, or we just finalized, but, uh, they were just like-for-like properties. We had, they were both undeveloped, and the resident had interest in, uh, the, the property that we had, because he would want to develop it, and he did. And the property that we had, uh, we liked it, because I, at the time, I think there was something to do with it being near Scatter Creek and possibly, uh, being valuable for just having vacant land for stormwater purposes. So, I mean, we, we have done these land swaps with residents that have come to us before.
This is getting, this is being appraised per the attorney's recommendation, FYI.
Okay. Good to know. Uh, call for the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is where are we on? I think that's the one we just did. I can't. Now we're on Resolution 11. Res- Ordinance 904, uh, this is amending the Arch Commission Ordinance. Ordinance 923, amending Chapter 2.70 Arts Culture and History Commission. So we're in the final stages of, uh, of establishing the Arts Commission. Uh, so we've asked council to review this. The changes are, uh, I believe in the original ordinance is stated that the Arch Commission would, from amongst its, uh, its volunteer commissioners, establish a clerk. And it also says in the ordinance that the city will provide a staff person, so it seemed like there was some duplication of effort. So we cleaned that up, so the, the, the commissioners will not elect a So we cleaned that up. So the 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 commissioners will not elect a clerk from among themselves. The city staff will provide that to the Arch Commission.
No problem. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approv- approve the Amendment to Ordinance nine zero four. The ordinance or an ordinance nine two three, establishing the Arch Commission for Tenino. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh where were we at in reports?
Done.
We're all done?
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to public comment period number two. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment to the Tenino City Council? Okay, are there any announcements?
Yeah, I'd like to point out that uh by falling short in the district title game, Tenino is facing two straight loser-out contests. Whereas if they had won, they'd be in double elimination uh at the state tournament right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. How's your new office treating you?
It's cozy, but uh it's working for me.
Good, good. Any other announcements from the council?
Not announcements, but suggestions due to actions that were taken to this morning and this afternoon. Uh we need to start taking a real close look at our fuel uh fuel consumption, and uh we may have to make adjustments to that.
Thank you.
What is he talk what 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 fuel adjustments? What are you talking about?
I'm assuming he's talking about stuff going on in Ukraine.
Yes.
Yep.
And then the president, the president is saying that uh more than likely, we're going to be paying a lot more for our fuel.
Okay, any other announcements? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Linda.
Full motion.
Good night.
Good night.